One for Carol.
Okay, all right, you're live.
Morning, everyone. You get a different voice today. Lonnie can't make it, so you get to put up with Richard Crouch here at the board. Go ahead and start our meeting with approval of the agenda and minutes of the 19th and the 26th.
I approve both of the 19th and the 26th minutes of the meeting. And there's no liquor license, so no renewal on that part.
And I will step down and second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, supervisors' updates.
I just want to thank everybody of the wonderful primary. I don't know if you guys realize what a wonderful auditor we've got that had to do a lot of extra. It just rolled smoothly, talking to other counties. They've had a lot of hiccups. But I had to brag about ours because it, people were pleased, proud, and I just want to commend Carol. She just did an awesome job. She spends many, many hours. And there's a lot of little things that has to be done, and she just steps up to the game and gets it completed. And us supervisors are very proud of her, and we're very, very fortunate. And again, I thank everybody for re-electing me for another four years of hard work. And I promise we will get the jobs done, and we've got a lot of projects going. So you'll see some fun things happening to the county. With that, Richard, I don't have, I didn't have any conference or conference calls, so next week will be a different ballgame.
Okay, I had a couple of meetings last week. One of them was with the city. I sat on the P and Z board for the county as for the city. We went through several different areas of their new ordinances and stuff coming up, and we made recommendations to the, we made recommendations to be taken to the city council for their approval. And until they handle them, that's where we are there. Also, I had a meeting with the regional mental health. Believe it or not, we actually met at the Pot County Courthouse in their boardroom. It's set up with Zoom and stuff, so, and worked out very well. Our main goal for that meeting was to approve eight new advisory committee members for the children's mental health, and also eight new advisory committee members for the adults. One of the big issues that this was going to bring up would be the voting on different matters that we have. And one of them was voting on the budget. Well, the budget is still controlled by the Board of Directors, which is the nine supervisors that sit on that board. And then it was also found out that there wouldn't be much problem with voting, because if you're a member of the children's board, you vote with the children's problems, not with the adults. If you're an adult, you vote with the adults' problems. So that was, that was one thing that was hesitant to a lot of the board members, was how this voting procedure was going to take place. But most of the issues have been resolved, so we're hopefully going to meet again next week or next month, maybe using the same process if the Community College in Atlantic's not open while we'll be meeting in Council Plus. And the next thing on our agenda is we have Larry Hurst, Emergency Management, and Julie Lyons with Public Health with updates on COVID-19. Julie?
Good morning, Richard. I do have COVID-19 updates for you, but I also wanted to take just a minute and update you on some public health fiscal issues. Trying to keep you abreast of our status of our grants. So we write grants in the spring. Grants start in March and April. We will be writing grants clear through June. Our fiscal year ends, of course, June 30th. And starting early in June and throughout the month of June is when we start getting answers to all of our applications. And I wanted to show you the grants that we have received so far to date. And I made a list for you, and you can just see, and I want to just spend a minute on the ones that are new grants that we either weren't expecting or we haven't had in previous years. If you go to the bottom three, you will see that Parents' Teachers was awarded a grant from Iowa West for $22,000. That's a new grant for that program. We also received notice from Agency on Aging. They have a capable program that will serve a multiple county area, and it's to prevent falls with the senior population. And
Is there an age requirement on that?
You know. This was. We'll sign you up.
You might need to.
I got an award letter on this grant, which surprised me because it was not solicited on my behalf. And so I called them. They sent me the, you know, the deliverables and the research and what they want to accomplish. And I asked them how much we were awarded, and they said that was still to be determined. So not all aspects of that grant do we know yet, but I will tell you that it fits right within our public health mission of helping seniors remain safely at home. And that will go to our public health nursing department, and we'll find out more about that. The other thing that came up, quite unsolicited on our part, if you look to the second page, I just wanted to share this email. I had a gentleman call my office, and the secretaries buzzed me, and they said, hey, there's a guy on the line, and he wants to give you some money. And you know, you're
Hello.
Well, you're kind of like, what do you really want me to buy? Because usually there's the ulterior motive. But I visited with this gentleman, and he was absolutely charming. And he, in fact, does run a nonprofit agency. And his Better Health for Iowans is a nonprofit. And he said that the board members are getting older, and it's COVID-19 time. And they had been talking about dissolving for a couple of years, and they just thought now is the time to go ahead with that process. And it was written in their bylaws that if they dissolved, a portion of their money would come to public health. So they did give us a $10,000 grant. It is unrestricted, which means
You can do anything you want.
We can do what we want. Of course, we will return and report, and we want to be good stewards of that money and put it to valuable use. And we did, in fact, receive the check. So it's real, and you asked me if I had any good news, and that's it.
That
That was No, that was
That was
A wonderful blessing. So early in June, we have secured $147,577 plus the undetermined amount from the capable grant. And now this is like, Richard, it's like we've planted our crops, and we're waiting for some things to grow and to come in, and we want to harvest. And so we will be finding out throughout this month the status of, I think we have over 30 grants out. And then I think we've gotten about 10 in. So we'll know more, and we will keep you advised of that.
Well, if you run onto any more of those people that need to call you and give you money, we'll outuse this office.
We always pick up the phone, Richard.
Great, great.
So that's the update on our fiscal status. Carol will probably be giving me the auditor's record-keeping of what percent of the year we are in. And I'll update you as soon as those numbers come in at the next board of supervisors' meetings, probably.
Super Julie, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So great.
So now we want to give you just a little update on COVID-19. Larry has a press release if you want to share. We did, Larry, I don't know if you want to share. We had a 20th case, and Larry put the word out. Sure. Need one? You're good?
Yeah, basically, Julie and Lori came in yesterday for a meeting, EOC court meeting, and basically this 20th has been identified. And then you did also inform me about the recovery piece. So where we at, we took the ones we were monitoring, they're
Nineteen have recovered.
Nineteen's recovered, okay.
And we're monitoring this latest one.
So I thought it might be
We're still doing great.
You know
We really are.
We really are. And I thought, you know, it might be kind of interesting to look just for a split second at some comparative statistics. So as Larry shared with you, we just had our 20th positive case. Nineteen of those 20 are recovered, which is good. We've had almost 1,300 people in Mills County tested. We've had zero hospitalizations and, of course, zero deaths, which is wonderful. Now comparatively, if you want to look at our neighbors, Pot County is currently, I believe, sitting at 306 cases. That's relevant to us because we're their neighbor, because we are, as a county, somewhat frequent flyers into Pot County. And so their numbers matter to us. I also know that Mercy Hospital is busy with COVID-19. I don't want it all to imply that they are over capacity, but they are seeing a significant number of cases. I think we heard from the RMCC that they even transferred some less critical cases over to Mo Valley so that they would have capacity if there were higher needs, individuals who needed treatment. So that's important for us to be aware of, that, you know, that is still going on. I also know that the last time I looked, Montgomery County had eight cases. So eight cases, right? That's a good number, but they did just recently report a death in Montgomery County. And then they also reported a long-term care outbreak in Belisko, I believe. So that just kind of underlies the message that we want to share. I think as Mills County, you know, we have 20 cases. We've had really good outcomes as far as hospitalizations or severe illnesses. But it's something that we definitely are keeping an eye on. And we are trying to balance keeping our population safe and keeping them well-advised of the current situation with COVID-19. And then also, we are very much transitioning into reopening Mills County. I think it was on May 26th that the governor did the last press release, and she opened up a number of businesses. On the third page of the packet I gave you, you can see that I have a reopening in Mills County that I would like to push out soon. And I just wanted to be able to remind our population. We get, as always, a large number of phone calls coming through public health. And I have to tell you, we are thrilled to get them. I am absolutely 100% in. If people have questions, call us. We are here to answer. We have two options. We will either have the answer or we will find the answer, and that's it. So, you know, in the last governor's proclamation, some significant things changed, like summer sports through schools were opened up with restrictions. And then that kind of led into a large number of people, you know, if you can play school baseball, can you play summer league volleyball? And just every question. So people are trying to figure out, how do we get back to business as normal? But how do we implement these public health measures to stay safe? And so really, the messaging that we're getting from the Iowa Department of Public Health and the governor is many community leisure and sporting activities are opening up, and the parameters are pretty consistent, that we're asking that people limit attendance to 50% of venue capacity. For an indoor building, usually capacity is set by a fire marshal, and it's posted. You also can kind of eyeball 50% capacity, half the number of usual people. There's also just direction that we limit party-sized seating together to no more than 10 people. So if you are in groups, you need to stay in that 10 people or less. Of course, that ongoing message of social distancing, maintaining six feet of distance between those attending if you don't live in the same household. Encouragement not to have any sort of self-service. The establishment should not have any self-service of food, including buffets or salad bars. And then just the other public health measures that have been consistent since early on. So social distancing of employees, customers, staff, students, et cetera. Increased hygiene, environmental cleaning. And then we are adding on that we really discourage, of course, handshaking and hugging. And then there is always that welcoming of wearing face masks if possible. We are not, of course, mandating face masks. That's left up to your own discretion and your own good judgment. But they are strongly encouraged, particularly if you're going to be in an environment, for instance, a grocery store here locally, if you go into shop, it would be an extremely considerate and mindful measure for you to take the moment and put the mask on. We are highly vested in keeping our most vulnerable population safe. Still closed, that's just one message that we still want to continue with, what is still closed. And at this time, pools for general use, live performance venues, senior citizen centers, indoor playgrounds, and door-to-door sales are currently still closed. So we'll be sharing that messaging here with the community. And then the last thing that I attached is, and I'm not going to spend any time on it because it's really self-explanatory, but it is just good guidance that we are sharing with our business partners here in Mills County is the Resuming Business Toolkit. It comes from the CDC. It has a lot of just fact sheets and checklist and how you know if you are ready to open, how you maintain safe business operations, what healthy work environments you want to put into place, how do you protect your patrons and keep your workers protected so that we can contain the spread of COVID-19. Other updates, I thought maybe Lori could share with us a little bit. As you know, we've been working really close with the long-term care facilities. All that work from public health comes out of our nursing department, and I think you have some good updates.
Yeah, we are working with, we check in with all long-term cares in our county at least weekly. Usually, we have multiple conversations with them every week. We're encouraging baseline testing for all clients and staff. That is in the works for all of the long-term cares. We are working with one population that is a multi-county population that does not have medical staff. And so we, as public health nurses, are going to be actually testing them for this population. That will be happening probably next week or the week after. And we will go in and do about, here in Mills County, it'll be about between 70 and 100 tests. We don't know for sure. But we've been in the process of developing policies and procedures and getting orders and that type of thing to be able to go in and actually do that testing. So that will be.
And you guys, I so get it for the nursing homes and the care facilities, but I'm telling you, they need to get out soon. I just feel so sorry for them that even if they could sit outside and
I think they've been doing some of that.
Get some fresh air.
I have to give it to these long-term carers. They have been doing an outstanding job
Oh, Larry.
of protecting those residents, which, you know, the families are very concerned about that. And they've been doing an outstanding job, and that's why they kind of came together and asked to possibly get a baseline, which is kind of the governor's initiative several weeks ago that she was putting out, highly recommending that we create this baseline and test our long-term care to see where we're at. Because if there is something there, we want to identify it and isolate it and mitigate so we don't have a outbreak in one of our long-term cares. And that's what we do not want here in Mills County. And I think that's what public health is advocating and working with their partnerships in these facilities and developing these relationships. So I think we need to keep moving forward with that. And those resources have been requisitioned. Those approvals have come. It's just the coordination and moving forward with it. And I think it would allow them to have a better understanding of where they really sit. I know there's apprehension for that, but I think it's important that they take serious consideration of doing this, like the collaboration with the three other counties that Lori's talking about. That was decided to get done, and now that is moving forward as a joint effort of all four counties. And I think it's very important. And we want to keep those numbers down, and we want to protect people. And like I said, I think that some of our long-term's have done some very unique things of initiatives for the residents, to keep them involved, to keep them mobile, to keep it interesting. And I know that some have been escorted on good days out in isolated areas to get some fresh air. So I think that's going on. And case by case, it is going on. But again, the families, there's restrictions, you know, except for really emergencies. And that's what's hard for the families and the resident concern. So those are the things where you have to innovate, you know, through the window, similar form of communication. It's unfortunate, but I think it's a significant health risk, as Julie and Lori have communicated to you over the weeks that we've been involved with this. And I think we need to hold where we're at and continue on to beat this so it can be manageable. I think you're never going to beat it, I don't think, but from a healthcare, but it's something we have to learn how to manage. And then as technologies and vaccines and things like this and more about the virus comes up, it'll help from a healthcare perspective, Julie and her people and the rest of the healthcare providers to better manage this like we would any other virus, you know, even like
I can't help but feel some of this that we have now practically been, it's just a common thing. It may be a normal, always wipe down your shopping cart. And I don't know about never hugging, you know, that's my
I know. It's really hard for some of us because I step in, I am a leaner in, and I have to correct myself.
I know.
And
I think it's just a whole new, better situational awareness
That is what it is.
and how we take care of ourselves.
And it'll be surprising how much of an outbreak of flus that we always got in the fall time. It may be zilch because we're doing so much better.
There is a whole bunch of new guidance coming out tomorrow on long-term care, and I'm anxiously awaiting that
Oh, good.
what's going to change. So another thing, did you see that video that Glen Haven Village put out on Facebook?
Yes.
No!
Oh, it's so good.
It actually, that is the reason why we encourage everybody to do what they need to do because these poor patients and clients in nursing homes are waiting for us to do what we need to do. We had tears in the nursing office while we were watching it.
Okay, so how do we log on?
You just go to Glen Haven Village on their Facebook page.
Watch it, watch it. It is worth the watch. It's very compelling. They didn't, I don't, and I don't know who, it was just done in-house, I think.
They've done several.
And they're extraordinary. Yeah.
Oh, clever.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah.
Gets to the point.
I don't know if you wanted to announce that one.
The governor, you know, last week, I think it was last week, yeah, last week had announced, Debbie Duren stood up and announced this mortgage and rental assistance funding that they were going to make available immediately after the conference, the press conference was over with. And of course, it looks like there is limited funds as most of these programs like this. And so we know that that fund is going to be aggressively pursued by people needing continued assistance with mortgage and rental assistance with landlords. They're asking landlords and mortgage companies to continue to work with the tenants and with the property owners the best they could to get through this. Because then some of these restrictions on holding the line on mortgage, you know, payments and stuff like that was going to be released per se, and so they need something to bridge that. And so this was put out, and they basically making it available and had a web link and a phone call people could call in on. I haven't got a litmus test done yet of where we stand, but I think County Attorney's Office is going to, or PIO is going to look into it to see what the impact was, how much, you know, how many people are applying, things like that. I think the money will probably go really fast, or they'll encumber it fairly fast. So that's something we'll watch and see how much, and I don't really
Did they say how much we're talking about?
No, they did not give it. I don't remember them giving a number, but they had estimated they might be able to handle 20,000 applications, but that's not a lot of applications. So that's what Debbie Duren put out at the press conference, which I thought was kind of interesting that she said that. Because that will vary based on the need, you know, the amount that they can, how far the money will go and whether they'll appropriate or identify additional monies. I do have a couple more things here. Also, we talked yesterday a little bit out, the state has a couple of requirements. Actually, ISAC has one, and you've heard about this probably. ISAC, and they've extended this, ISAC had put out a survey asking for a listing from the counties. And it had a lot to do with courthouse or county service opening on a list of PPEs that you might need to do this. And this was an ISAC initiative, which they've extended the EMAs to do this. They said N95 masks would probably not be available, which it's on the survey list, which I don't understand. But so I'm going to finish this today based on just the best estimate of what the county services needs might be. We can support some of that internally with our resources that we have here. But that's one survey. The other survey came from Iowa Homeland Street Emergency Management Division or the state. And this survey is, they want a 30-day estimate of PPE needs. In other words, a 30-day stockpile estimate, 30-day needs for a county. And they want you to base it on your usage rates, as you know, today. In other words, what your best estimate based your usage rate today. And again, it follows along in general categories. But of course, they're not listing, they're only listing certain things for some reason, such as face shields, disposable gowns, procedural mask, hand sanitizer. And of course, they left N95s off the list. So they have three or four distinct categories they're asking about. And so that's a survey that's going to have to be responded to. Another thing came out, had to do as part of the governor's emergency education relief project or fund. Apparently, they're wanting surveys from Department of Education, which means from the school districts on technology access survey completed as part of a $26.2 million initiative or relief that might be available to the education districts and things of that nature. So that's probably in process now and ongoing, something that we picked up on yesterday. So a couple of other things popped up about the state getting requests for personal protective equipment from various entities, businesses, and employees of those businesses that aren't necessarily, didn't qualify as essential workers or essential critical infrastructure. And the state is trying to work through those issues on those needs, especially where businesses have a large amount of workers, and they're working in a certain work environment in close quarters, and how do we deal with that? Based on availability of resources on the common market versus a state or federal government-provided support to further, you know, flatten the line, as you might say, of this virus, this pandemic, as we are calling this. So that's kind of out there being discussed right now. And they're asking for some information back from the various EMAs that may have, emergency management agencies that may have a demographic that fits this, that they may need additional assistance.
And of course, we don't know anything about the education schooling type of thing.
They're working on their plans. I know that's been actually, I know Julie and her staff's been talking to
They are Oh, they are in a hot planning mode, and they have I sit with three different committees, and they're trying to figure out everything from transportation and how the buses will run and how they'll follow all those public health measures. They're trying to figure out, there are three options of how they can start school, either completely have people do learning from home, or a hybrid system, or return as normal, and how to figure out all those parameters. I really believe as the summer progresses and we get I really believe as the summer progresses and we get closer to time for school, the situation will reveal itself to us. But having said that, the school is in that position where they need to be well-prepared for whichever option reveals itself, which is a pretty cumbersome, time-intensive endeavor to try to undertake, and then, you know, they're trying to figure out all these complex contingencies and dealing with, you know, their, their staff and their school environments and their special needs students and transportation. I mean, they've got, they've got a very complex situation on their hands, and they've got to have really detailed plans in place for three different options. And then I think they'll find out with short notice which option's gonna be the most viable, and I think that the Iowa Department of Education is gonna give a lot of guidance, and then you're gonna see what all your, um, surrounding communities are, are doing, and at some level, that's gonna play into it. I know early in the outbreak, we, Larry and Lori and I worked really closely with Devin. Um, he, he tried to, with extraordinary measures, keep the school system open, and he relieved, believed that once it shut down, it would not reopen this year, and he believes that young people need to be in school and need to be learning. Amen.
That's right.
But, um, you know, as, as much forward motion and dedication as he had to that, the situation revealed itself otherwise.
Right.
And, and then the whole district had to come on board with what was mandated by the governor, and I think that that situation will continue to, to play out. But I have to tell you, they, they are planning, and they do not have an easy job.
And I, and I think the other thing we noticed is between the two districts, uh, this whole evolution we've been going through has drawn some of their philosophies and exchanged information between the leadership together.
Yes.
We've noticed that there's been a lot of cross-communication about, uh, you know, if, if you're looking to do this, we need to be in, in common step together, uh, to, to do certain functions, enclosures or whatever, and I think that's a good thing, and that's a, a good thing for the education within Mills County and region on how, uh, what is the best practice, what are the lessons learned, let's share that, uh, you know, don't be proprietary of a plan. If I have a good idea, let's share it with our, our other education partners.
Right.
Uh, because it may develop into a better product in the end, or better strategy in the end. And I know this is really, as Julie said, to be some very hard decisions for them coming up, because you're working with youth, and, and the youth are going to have to learn all kinds of things, of self-situational awareness and social distancing, if they're going to have any chance at all of making this work and, and, and protect themselves healthily and the faculty. So I think, I think, I think they need to be optimistic, uh, that's my going in this thing, I think that's what they're taking it as, uh, but, but they have to have buy-in, and it has to have buy-in from not only the students, but the parents. Uh, and I think if we do that, I think that Devin and Superintendent Hook is going to have, uh, a reasonable amount of success on getting education heading in the right direction here like they want to have it heading. But, uh, this virtual thing may be a, a stepping stone to that again, but, uh, it's not necessarily what you would like to do.
When you look at the Department of Ed and the guidance that they're giving schools in regards to COVID-19, um, at this point in time, a lot of things are kind of left up to your discretion.
Sure.
And the school districts are advised to counsel with public health regarding how they, um, you know, so I had a conversation with Tim and the principal at East Mills, they want, they want to have a graduation ceremony, and the Department of Ed is, is, is asking them to lean in on local leaders and figure out best practice, and, and so, um, we have developed some really good communication with them, and, and they are very open to, they want it, they want to get it right, they want to do it right, they want to keep their staff and their students safe, and then they still want to do these important core functions for your graduating seniors, for your returning students. So they're, they're busy.
Yeah.
With hard work.
Well, and you know as well as I, they can't make a mistake.
Right?
That's, that's the, the draw, we gotta have it right.
Right.
One last thing I have is that, uh, you probably know this, maybe you don't, the farmers market is looking to open June 10th, uh, next week.
I didn't know.
But they're going to open over at the bank parking lot. It was put out by the Chamber here a couple days ago, and, uh, and I think the bank parking lot for starting out is probably a whole better solution than here, because they have more room to give the distancing between the booths to create a traffic flow, which was addressed. They actually addressed the, the macro form of the plan, what they can expect when they get there as far as, um, not, you know, uh, congregating around one booth, uh, that they will not touch anything, things like that. So I think it's a good plan, and we'll just see how it goes out, and of course, it's gonna be a little hot possibly, uh, over there, uh, in that, you know, that type of surface parking lot is not having some shade here, but I think starting out, if they want to provide that as a service, and the people that have those booths want the effort to bring their produce in, um, it's, it's very admirable, but they're, they're having it to food only, I still believe.
The samples.
Fumigated things only at this time, and no activities and things of that nature. So I think as long as they do that, they're in this, they're meeting the spirit intent of the, uh, the governor's intention.
Well, and they're still close to the businesses.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, why not the park, but that's what they wanted to bring up here.
They were almost looking to go back to the park, and a park really, and the main parking would allow them that same social distancing, uh, I think, with some shade, but I think the issue was the business district was really wanting to get it up here, uh, and, and that was the whole issue.
More so now, yeah.
When it, when it came, that's why they approached you all, uh, when we brought it to the courtyard.
And I was gonna say, um, I had had conversations with Rachel, and she, you know, asked me what was the opinion, and I said, well, right now, since the courthouse is closed, it probably wouldn't be such a great idea, plus, you know, I didn't know how they could actually social distance and get, you know, everything. It's not that the board said no, they never did say no, it's just now isn't.
They would need more room, basically. They would have to sprawl more out to make that, right, if they did it here. And I think, again, as you said, at the time, they weren't sure what the boards and the county's intention was, which you're getting closer to making that decision, it looks like. And so, uh, this timing of them, of the tent is maybe, you know, in the right time, I guess, and, but they're gonna start there, which it may be a good starting point for them.
It's a start.
Yeah.
It's a start.
That's all I have.
June 10th, all right.
Well, thank you, Julie.
Thank you more, you guys. Thank you so much.
Did the governor, did her proclamation go off on the 27th or?
I thought it was the 26th. I feel like it was the 26th.
This was the last formal talk that she had.
I think she talked on the 27th.
It was the 26th.
Yeah, she talked, yeah.
And it was dated the 26th.
Yeah.
Okay. But I was gonna say is, where are, I mean, are things?
She's, well, she's going to Tuesdays and Thursdays now.
Okay.
So she'll have one today, uh, and she's doing it from the Capitol probably, and she returned to the Capitol, and so, uh, but she did, she's had, she's done some outside of that because of this, uh, demonstration, you know, the protests and stuff. So she has done a couple related to that, uh, that was kind of not specifically to this in the COVID-19, so, uh, we, she will probably have one today as, as she pre-scheduled.
Uh, it was on the 26th, and she extended the public health emergency through June 25th.
June 25th, okay.
And she opened bars, social, fraternal, same as restaurants, starting on May 28th, and then June 1st was when she did the, the wide opening and included extended family and friends could gather, as long as public health mitigation measures were in place. Also, you remember that I spoke to some businesses that remain closed, so your live performance theater that we have in Mills County, adult daycare, um, or, um, what else? There, there's a, there's a list. Those at least, those will stay closed at least until June 17th. Um, so I expect on June 17th or around about that date, the governor will speak to those, um, those few businesses that remain closed and maybe set parameters or dates for when they might open.
Or should continue, continue with those closures or restrictions, so.
And, and, and we have received some significant pushback from the, the few businesses that do remain closed, and we understand that they have a vested interest in wanting to reopen, and we've had our county attorney look over their complaint, and then their attorney had their complaint, and then we forwarded information to the attorney general who made the final decision, and they are closed at this time.
Well, just, just as a forewarning, I got from Isaac, uh, you know, liability insurance is something that everybody just kind of sitting on the edge of their seat, 'cause there's, as they claim, there's a group of lawyers that's just waiting for a stumble, for somebody to stumble, and then they will, they will just, you know, pound on it, and the ones that are really watching is, is, uh, counties that have, uh, like a packing house, a pro, some big processing plant or something like that, where I, I still can't see how the county is involved in that business, you know, why the county would be drug into the liability part of it. It's not the county's liability to set the perimeter for that business. And this is what I was asking the question the other day, they said, well, it is still happening in that county. I says, so in other words, if we have a car accident, we go back to the Ford dealership or the company that made the vehicle and, and sue them? Well, that's a thought.
Oh, my.
Oh.
Well, I mean, it, it, one thing leads to another, so, you know, uh, but.
I think it's important that we, as public health, do due diligence, that we do a good job of informing our community when we have a business that should be closed, it's important that we communicate that, especially if an inquiry comes in-house. Um, I don't really think that we are necessarily the regulatory entity to enforce it, but we advise, and then we advise our county attorney and our law enforcement. So I do think, even notwithstanding a litigation concern, I do think it's important as public health, as officials, that we, we communicate best practice, and we encourage businesses that should be closed to be closed. There is a very significant public health research-based reason why live performances are not happening right now. You cannot go to a live performance and maintain social distancing, and you are putting a population at risk. It's not, it's not what should be happening right now. And I realize the economic impact of, for those individuals or entities, but the risk outweighs that. And so I, I really do feel like we have a, a strong responsibility to communicate that. And then by and large, for, for many less black and white things, there's a lot of subtle things, and, you know, we just, we need to encourage best practice. If you go to the grocery store, wear a mask. If you don't, that's okay. If you do, it would be good.
Mm-hmm. But don't stand over the guy's shoulder.
Yes.
Uh, at our meeting the other day on Monday in, in Pot County, why, some of the people had been to restaurants that, you know, had reopened and things, and, and larger restaurants, you take, the guy used a Billy Gin, for instance, he said, they just, they just cleaned out. He says they have a table setting here, a table over here, he says it's all measured off, they've got tape and thing on their carpet, so whoever cleans puts the table back where it's supposed to be, so everybody is basically six feet apart. It, it's kinda scary to walk in and you're going, boy, this place doesn't do any business, you know.
And, you know, we have some big things coming up. I've been working with Mary Bolton from the Fair Board, you know, they're, they're trying to figure out.
What's gonna happen?
How, how are they gonna do it? They are kind of watching the Iowa State Fair to see, and I think the Iowa State Fair said they would make a decision by June 15th. Is that, am I right?
I wasn't sure.
I heard that, you know? And, um, if, if we can go ahead and do a fair, putting those safe practices into play will actually help people come and attend, um.
You mean like the pre-barbecue?
No. We, you know.
This is not a lot like a salad bar.
Nobody shows, nobody shows up, Julie, unless you give something away.
Right? Yep, I know it. So we just have to work through it. It's a, it's a strange, strange year, and we, we've got, but I have to say, we, we're staying, we've got our nose above water and we're doing okay. And that's important. We just wanna hold our ground.
Right.
Well, we appreciate everything that's going on, and if you have any problems, you know.
Uh, am I released, or is there a, there's no other thing that I need to stay for?
Um, not unless you wanna talk about our stuff opening first, but.
If you want me, I'll come. If you don't, I can be busy.
Well, and, and you've seen the recommendation.
I do have the letter that was written by the county attorney's office, and we, oh, for the opening of the courthouse, yes.
And it's, and it's been based on inputs that we've been talking about.
Yeah, we've given them a lot.
And then she kinda grabbed that, her staff and facility, basically administrated it into this.
Only question I, I would have while you both are here, okay, say we have someone come in, they go through the question thing, you go out, okay, you're the person that has to bring them in, you take their temperature, they have a temperature. Do you automatically say out the door? Do they call you?
That would be, that would be an immediate disqualifier.
Right, but.
And then to invite them to call us would be fine, but they don't have to call us. They, they can go home and self-isolate, or they?
In this letter opening or not.
Yeah, I have a copy of it here.
But I didn't, I didn't come up on that part, if, if we found someone that was.
The actual screening document that will be available online or in person when you come, and if you screen, we're, I think we're looking for all no answers, right?
All right, the answer all no.
And so if you, if you get any yes, that's a disqualifier.
You can't come in, I realize that.
And then if it's a temperature, you should check with your medical provider or call public health. A temperature in and of itself does not indicate COVID-19. But it, it does indicate that you're infectious, and you should get it checked out.
Well, you wanna have no, but the problem is, you're gonna have some of these are gonna be yes, and that's because, uh, if you're 60 or older, and you're gonna have a lot of people 60 or older, so I think it's gonna have to be a qualification.
Yes, I think a yes just means further screening.
Yes, and you're going down to the symptomatic piece and then central contact piece, so, and I think in the symptom piece is where the key part is, that East Department head or representing department's gonna have to use very good judgment here, and if they are, then we would have to, um, if they're visibly, you know, short of breath, unless it's a medical condition type thing like.
Yeah. Did I answer your question or not quite?
Not quite, but it, I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, I just, I, I just, uh, have a problem of saying you can't come in.
No, you, but that's why we're not opening 100%.
Well, and I realize that, but the person that went out there.
They should not be going out there, they're going to screen first, the, the screening will not happen face to face.
Yeah, but they, they don't take their own temperature and stuff, do they?
No, no, when, you're gonna do your little infrared check when they come through the door, right?
So there'll be somebody out the door.
Well, you have to go pick them up.
Whoever's, they have the appointment with, that department head will need to do that.
Have somebody go out there, so.
Well, then, instead of them reading all this, kinda like at the hospital, could they then have them go through the questions?
And this is pretty easy to.
This is the document that they will screen. This document that, that, this is kinda like a policy and procedure, this is policy and procedure, which is good, you want that.
Right.
Here's just the simple screening. If somebody does have a temperature, Richard, you're gonna have to invite them not to come in.
Right, no, I understand that, I, I do. But I, I didn't know whether our hell, our personnel here would have to recommend that they call public health.
They do not, they do not. They're welcome to, they can if they choose to, but by no means do they need to call us.
I didn't think our people should be doctors, nurses.
No, because the temperature may be something else, you know, it could be anything, and, and of course.
You get an ear infection, you might have a temperature.
It may not bother you until you show up here and.
Yes.
So, no.
Yes, but all of your patrons are gonna appreciate that you're, you've got some basic public health mitigation measures, that's, that's just good practice, and we're all gonna get used to it. It just means we're taking care of each other.
Right. I mean, now you don't think anything about it when you walk in the hospitals, you just know somebody's gonna be there, or any eye doctor, ear doctor, anything, they're always stopping you right there at the door.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Okay, good.
No, I just, you know, want some clarification on it.
Yeah. They do not have to call us.
Right.
No, unless they choose to or want to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Hang in there.
You bet, you too.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Larry.
Hi.
Okay, we gotta do your public hearing first probably. Yeah, we go back to your project. We're gonna do the public hearing opening for his.
Yeah, nine o'clock.
Yeah, maybe nine o'clock too. It's okay.
Not bad.
Not bad.
Hey.
I'm not sure the board has a copy.
I got one extra copy.
Let me go make them a copy real quick. Is this the whole thing?
That's the whole thing. Page, well, we don't have page numbers. It's section 26.7.
Cause all we're doing is, is uh, replacing some words or.
Yeah, we added four words.
Four words to it.
Okay.
No, I.
Yeah, I can explain it pretty quickly.
So that's why Cory's, we're gonna scan.
Okay. And the four words are?
Should we open up the public hearing and just go over that real quick?
Let's open the public hearing at nine oh eight. I make a motion to open up the public hearing at nine oh six, seven? Where are you getting it?
I'm seeing eight, but.
Oh, see, I'm at a different angle. Okay.
Seven, we're going with eight.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
There we go.
So we recently adopted our new floodplain ordinance, um, using a recommended ordinance that we edited slightly for our own use from the Iowa DNR. We went through the steps, got approved, did all three hearings. Upon me sending it into the DNR for their approval as well, they came back and said, oh, hey, we need to add a few more words. Um, on section 26.7, that is the floodway fringe overlay district. So this is gonna be, so we have floodway. That's basically the river or the stream and, and anything under, uh, uh, I believe 25-year flood. And then floodway fringe would be anything encompassing the 100-year flood area. So in the floodway fringe, uh, section B is the performance standards and the, and the permitted uses. So this is covering the new wording. Uh, the previous wording was all structures shall. New wording is all new and substantially improved structures. Shall, now we have about three, three things here. It's be adequately anchored to prevent flotation, collapse or lateral movement of the structure. Be constructed with materials and utility equipment resistant to flood damage and be constructed by methods and practices that minimize flood damage. So it's just probably a little legal language to.
What's, I'm, I'm sorry, Cory, what is the exact section? Twenty?
Twenty-six.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven B.
Yep.
Got it.
So it first read all structures shall, and now we changed it to all new.
And substantially improved. So that's probably a good real, great legal term, substantially improved.
Yeah.
Crazy grandfather.
All new and substantially.
Improved.
Improved.
Uh huh. So that's the, that's the change and um, we'll, we'll have the second, third reading next week, I assume. And.
We'll do the first reading after the public hearing. So when we close the hearing, then we'll, then the board will approve the first reading of the.
That's correct, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve the new wording of section 26.7B to all structures shall to all new and substantially improved.
Well, and that's wonderful, but we probably should close the public hearing first.
Oh, do, do we close it?
Doesn't look like there's any comments on uh, YouTube. I haven't received any comments.
About it and, or even any inquiries, so.
Nine eleven.
Okay, so now I make a motion to close the public hearing at nine eleven.
Okay, now you can.
Now you can.
And now I make a motion to approve the new wording.
Second?
Do you want a copy? I prepared an extra one.
I'll give you a copy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-six seven.
Okay, and as Cory stated, we will put the second and the third reading on for next week and final approval because I don't see where any things are gonna be controversial over this. No one's contacted us or had any questions regarding it. So I don't see any reason not to put it both on and approve it and make it go.
I think it's just a clarification. FEMA, when it dismissed the DNR, it didn't get, they didn't, they picked up on it. They just needed a clarification.
Yeah, and I assume this is probably going on throughout all of Iowa because, because a lot of other communities just adopted the ordinance based on Iowa DNR's guidance. And so when FEMA talked to Iowa, Iowa DNR and said, hey, need to change this, I assume it probably has to be changed in many communities.
Uh huh.
And that was basically why I said, um, I changed the, the ordinance to twenty dash oh two A as an amendment because I can't see giving it a whole nother, another number. So that's why it's got the A behind it. So.
I probably need to put that on here, huh?
This is the same ordinance that the cities that are participants in the national flood insurance program receive letters also from the study is completed. And they are required also to update and adopt an ordinance similar to this that DNR did provide a template for.
Okay.
And I'm currently in the process of going out to city, so I know there's some questions by some of the cities and some of the, I don't know if DNR followed up with them or not. So we're going to, I'm gonna try and ensure that I get copies from my commission on board and that this has been completed. Cause this reflects the ability to have access now to the national flood insurance program for their citizens. So they have to do this.
Got it. They have to do this.
Now, all this that, that the engineer's done is gonna be doing again eventually because, or you all will, because they're gonna have to do another flood insurance study eventually because of the baseline. We don't know what that number is, or those estimates because of the flood of 19. So this is gonna start all over again.
Yeah, especially have to start all over if they redo the letters. With all, which we had good information.
Yes.
I didn't care to get into that for the general discussion, so I don't think.
But, but anywhere in the floodplain is gonna be affected. And that plus, that is, it doesn't, it means the basin, but also means the interior. All our waterways, the Silver Creek, Indian Creek, the Nishin Botna, all those floodplain floodway areas, that's, that's part of this flood insurance study countywide. And so there, everyone in that, now Henderson was the only town in the county that did not have to participate in flood insurance study because of elevations. So.
Okay. Well, that would be a good selling point for Henderson.
Well, they've not been, had the requirement to be in it for a long, long time. Although there was issues with the West Nish and then um, some of the flooding that happens in the past has come up close to them before. So their big problems run off. They don't have good drainage. A lot of these small towns don't have drainage systems. So it's tough. Coming off egg, coming off property up, upward from them is flows through town. Emerson's a good example of that. So, and Emerson's done some things on redirecting their water, but sometimes it goes down and stops the railhead. You know, it's like a bowl. So.
Cause it has no other way to go.
Yeah.
Mr. Engineer, we're up to utility reports. Anything?
No new utility, or utility permits to report. Um, I have a couple in my office that we're still waiting on final plans before we approve them or bring them here for approval. Um, I do wanna say our new employee has, I, I've given him the responsibility of our utility permits, uh, documentation, record keep communication with the utility companies. And he's, he's uh, taken to it quickly. Um, kinda what I was expecting, previous employee, he's kinda made it his own. Um, I've stepped through the process with him and helped him uh, on, on a couple of the first inspections and, and what I'm expecting out of him. And, and it's uh, he's really kinda cleaned it up. Um, cause we were getting a little bit behind with uh, our limited staff and so much else going on in the office. So I'm very pleased with where that, uh, where we are right now. We, cause we do have a couple issues uh, with the utility companies. Um, not compacting trench lines very well. Have, have some washouts around some utility boxes that were recently placed and, and so we followed up with them and, and uh, it's, it's uh, much better now than where we were a month ago. So just wanna commend him on that. My only action item for this week was uh, approval pay voucher 28 to United Contractors for project RFM CO 65, parent 94. This is a 190th Street Railroad Overpass project. They, last month, we've been playing this monthly, last month they poured their deck. Um, and so we do have a, a bridge crossing the railroad now. Uh, we've got earthwork, ninety-eight percent complete. And, and yesterday I was out early in the morning uh, with a technician, helping him on his first concrete pour that he was doing inspection on. Lovely, they chose four forty-five in the morning to do that pour, but uh, they, they also got that poured over top of their box culvert. So projects made, made a lot of strides in the last couple of months. Be real great to get this project completed. Um, we are um, looking at a end of June to start mainline paving. Um, that'll be the last big um, hurdle on this project. So basically we'll lay down base material to the paving. Still trying to get some seeding done um, on the earthwork that's been completed and the ditches. And, and then they'll have some shouldering work, um, some railing on the, uh, on the bridge and guardrail and um, paint it and open it up. So the ending is, is in sight after what's been.
Oh my gosh.
How many years?
There we go.
I mean, it was let in uh, March of 2018 and design was in 2014. So this has been a long time coming project and would be great to.
In 2014, Mr. Mayberry and I went to Council Plus with the DOT and I asked very kindly to have the RISE grant extended.
Yeah.
And they graciously did that, which I'm very grateful for because I don't think it would have went without it. So.
Nope.
Well, how much is the bill?
Yes.
Uh, with all the work that was completed and we are also paying out the repair work. Um, we finally have completed that um, change order and got that change order approved through the DOT as well. The total amount for this month is six hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred five dollars, ninety-two cents.
Is that, okay.
Yeah, most of it's, I mean, it's pretty much split between the, the repair work and the deck pour. Well, more, more on the deck pour, but.
So are we close to the end of the little checks? Or paying them, you mean? Hang them?
We are.
How about Sarley?
We have about one million two hundred thousand to go. The paving, the paving will be eight hundred thousand of it, I believe. Let's see. Yeah, paving will be about eight hundred thousand, that one point two left.
I make a motion to approve, to pay voucher number 28, the RFM for six-three-six-five oh five point ninety-two. Is that right?
Yes.
I have a motion made and seconded. I just sat down and seconded. Uh, to pay the voucher of six hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred five dollars and ninety-two cents to United Contractors for work done on railroad overpass. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those, question carries.
You're the chairman today. You're right below my name.
Just to let you know, Cory, we had a meeting with Senator Ernst on Saturday. Uh, all three of those board members were in attendance along with some other people. And one of the things that was brought up is why FEMA is not paying bills. I mean, we explained your, your problem. Uh, Lonnie brought up GMU. I mean, there was a lot of people brought up the same problem. Why, why isn't FEMA paying? And she says, I will look into it. She says, I will get some answers because she says, the money's always been allocated. I mean, it's there, but like for instance, it was, well, uh, Mr. Young was there from PJ, you know? They're, they're in the same boat. They can't pay us till they get paid from, and it's a vicious circle. And she took it, was gonna look into it. I'll call her this week or somebody and, but it's not right. I mean, the money is supposed to be there with FEMA.
I was gonna say the drainage districts are in the same boat as you guys.
It, it sure does feel like sometimes it's FEMA's trying to find as many ways possible to, to.
Get out of there.
Void at uh, any kind of reimbursement. I actually met with GMU and their um, um, their consulting engineer yesterday um, to help them with their FEMA reimbursement. FEMA was requiring, uh, they, they did their site inspection for their fuel pump stations and, or in buildings. Uh, they just record, the first site inspection, they recorded the mechanical damage and equipment damage, just kinda assuming the building was underwater, that'd be included. Well, they had to do a second site inspection to include the actual building structures. Even after the site, second site inspection, they're requiring them to get a letter from the floodplain manager, myself, to certify that it was damaged. And so I, I reviewed theirs, the FEMA site inspection report, went out, reviewed both the sites as well. I am working on a, a letter with uh, and, and so we, we jumped through the hoops they put in front of us, but they keep putting new hoops and, and I mean, I could pull up many incidences like our, our bridge that's labeled structurally deficient that they said, no, it's not eligible because of deferred maintenance. Just because the bridge is structurally deficient does not mean we are not maintaining it. A bridge can be structurally deficient because the guardrail's out of spec because the guardrail spec changes every couple of years. So it, it is frustrating at times and, and we just, we keep going forward. And, and that's why I've been using Iowa Homeland Security a lot in, in my last two projects because each, I'm so concerned about what, how I respond that I want, I wanna go through Homeland Security to say, am I, am I responding correctly? Are they gonna throw us another curve ball? So.
Yeah, one thing that I know for COVID-19, they've changed the state because it affected the entire state or the nation. FEMA is empowering the states, includes Iowa Homeland Security Management Vision. They will be FEMA and the state liaison in one for COVID-19 for the public assistance. In other words, you only have to deal with HSD. The money actually comes into the state, um, all but that share, that fifteen percent that's the county or city's share, the applicant's share, the local share match. And uh, they're going to be not only helping administer, but they're going to be answering the questions of FEMA. So it's gonna be a one-stop shop. I would hope in the future, based on if this goes well for this disaster, that if we have future flooding events or something like that, the state will be empowered more based on best practices, how well the states did on managing these federal dollars, that they will allow the state to take the role of FEMA because the states deal with this and they know their playing field. Uh, a lot of the FEMA people that come in here to do the initial site visits and stuff like that can be coming from anywhere in the United States. And they may not know central United States, the demographic, the playing field. And so you end up with uh, different types of negotiations or uh, producing different types of documentation or educating them.
Not knowing how to spell the word timber.
Yeah. You know, I say, and it's not just, and it's the levage and drainage. We had people show up from FEMA that have never seen a levee or drainage system.
Came to review seal coat roads and don't know what a seal coat road is.
So, so those are things I think that, that maybe when they, they allow the states to take this on for this COVID-19, that the state can. to take this on for this COVID nineteen, that the state can, at least Iowa can petition, that they get a bigger role than what they are now, they're partners now with FEMA, and they'll work with us, and that's why the engineer is stating he's been going back to Homeland Security emergency management vision a lot, and that's what he needs to do, is to leverage through them to get the federal government to be more responsive, be more timely, but, and there's a lot of paperwork, and that, the key is, is paperwork reduction is what we ought to be moving towards, and, and, and getting the assistance if eligible, allowable, down here, so we can fix the things we need to fix and recover, and to basically reconstitute our services, and our ability to run our various departments, and...
And in the meantime, it's a waiting game, that you could use that money to, I don't know, pay bills.
GMU went ahead and elevated one of their, the stations, and, and that's, they did it right away, because at their advice of their PDMG, and then they came back, when they were waiting for the approval, the funds, it was, "Oh, why did you do that already? You need approval first." And it's like, "Well, tell me one thing, tell me something else." And, and they're on their fifth PDMG. Luckily, I'm only on my second, but, but then you're having to re-explain every project.
He kind of gets into how you define emergency protection, you know, and then post-disaster repairs, you know, and reconstitution, so, and those are things you have to grovel with, and, and the engineer is one department in our county that has significant investment in this, because he has a lot of infrastructure that he has to maintain. And because of that, if, if we're looking for damage assessment after a severe storm or flooding event, or anything to do with damage, it's, if I want, if the state wants threshold, normally it comes from that source, statewide, or regional, why, is to, to meet that X million dollar threshold for the go-out-for-presidential. So, and that's why we have a process in place now, that its stream flows in, it goes in to Homeland Security, and we have a portal now, a web portal, it can be done, so it's, it's real-time. I can see it, or I can see it, State of Iowa can see it as it's being done now, and hopefully in the future, we'll use that more.
Good.
To collect the app.
Yeah.
Good.
It's the best thing, you can see.
Where we're at is Silver City Highway.
The project's been let. We, you gave me the ability to, or you guys approved the contract, and approved me to sign the contract. We have a late start date, the end of August. I've been in contact with Western Engineering, the awarded contractor, they, they're looking at probably a start sometime in August. It's a short, it's only three miles, so I imagine it, it won't take more than a month to, to complete that project, and they'll probably be in and out.
In-school season.
Oh, yes.
Have we, Corey, you got any reports of any buckling roads yet this year?
We haven't had any blowout, well, to my knowledge, we haven't had any blowouts, so, but it's just now getting to that heat.
I know there's, yeah, joint counties have had a little bit of problem with that already this year.
We, we have been doing some concrete patching, but...
Folks, we will be taking about a five-minute break. Thank you.
Hope it didn't shut us off. Okay, we're back folks. Got a little more general discussion with the county engineer and then we'll move on.
Yeah, kinda wanted to update you guys on a couple of other things going on the office. We are, I've been working with Attorney's Office with getting an agreement to Ames Construction for the conveyor belt. Going up on the northeast west portion of county. Waiting on Billy and zoning to get back with any comments they might have. We had a couple, had a couple of questions that pertain to them. Permitting, inspection and, and kind of their, their uh, how to handle their monetary um, fees, whether we, we talked about maybe a monthly installment uh, on the surcharge fee but, we're hoping to get some input from Billy and zoning on that. They've been invited the last two weeks to this meeting. Still waiting to hear back from them on that. We, I, I received news from MAPPA, Don Gross, about the EDA grant application for the Bunge Improvements Project. He informed me that the EDAs allocated all the funds for the Disaster Assistance Program. He thought we'd still submit the application, but he's not too, uh, exactly. So, I've been, I've talked with John Rasmussen, the Pot County Engineer, since some of the projects in Pot County. And we're kind of brainstorming um, other funding sources and, and what we can do. Richard, as you mentioned before, we had requested a RISE grant extension in the past. Uh, I've already kind of notified Jennifer Kalashia who, who administers the RISE grant that we might, we might be requesting an extension as well. Since, since this application's not going as planned.
But you just said the EDA, all the funding is in, is there?
They've, they've already allocated to other projects. That's what Don Gross has told me.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Um, yeah, I was, I was disappointed with, with how that has gone um,
But I thought this EDA was, yeah, I thought that was a set stone type of thing.
Well, nah, well, it was, it was a good pitch from MAPPA and, and I thought, I mean, the, the way they made it sound like it, it, it should have been pretty easy to get the funding and, and we had the app. You know, we, we did all the work with the RISE grant application and had, had all the information ready and completed. And we just flipped it over to MAPPA who said that they'd turn in the EDA application. It's taken longer than expected for them to complete uh, the environmental concurrence that they said they would handle. And so, that delay, I'm, I'm not sure if that delay is what caused it, but, but it probably didn't help. And, and so it's just, I guess that's where I, that's all, what I'll say on the record. I do want to also mention, this is uh, I have been county engineer for a year now. Um, hit my, I think it was January 2nd last year when I officially took over. And so, thank you. I, I thought I'd just kind of go over this first year, just real brief and say,
It's been a learning experience.
It has been a learning experience. Uh, I've had great aid from other departments, um, former employers. Uh, I, I got a good network with other counties throughout the state that, county engineers are very helpful to each other. And the Service Bureau is great, um, great resource for me. And whenever I have a problem or issue, I might not always be able to get the answer correctly or right away, but I, I know where to find it. We, we had four projects um, in this last year. Two of them are still active. Or four, they're all still open. Um, we'll, we'll be wrapping up two of them, just doing project closeout paperwork audit stuff. Two of them are still active. We, we also have the Silver City Highway that is considered active, although construction will start for another two months probably. We have currently four projects in design, which after, or the previous twelve years, there were no projects in design in-house. So, we, we might be taking a bigger bite than uh, we should, but I'm not too overly concerned about it because, because two of them are a little bit smaller design projects and, and the other one is uh, we're trying to get ahead of it before. We have plenty of time, I, is, is what I'm saying.
Well, I was, I thought, what, my understanding, one of the things Kevin said that you brought to the table was the ability to do the designing that we have not had before. So,
Correct.
That was another one of your little flak.
So, yes, we're uh, trying to cut some of those in-house costs. Consulting costs, I don't know where that is. Also have uh, the Iowa watershed approach projects coming up. Um, they're in final design stage right now. Need to find uh, permanent and temporary easement coming up for for those projects, which I, I gotta say is a great program because they pay for design, they pay for um, construct, ninety percent of construction, and they pay for contract administration. We just had the ten percent construction match. We've had two new technicians hiring. We got new, the new shop construction. The office manager and myself, we're one year in. We've updated the floodplain ordinance. We uh, have had the flood, flood recovery. Gone through a global pandemic. We have a gravel shortage. We've had revenue loss um, with uh, the flood.
How did you have revenue loss? All them problems, I mean geez.
We've had uh, um, going through grant applications with the, the RISE grant application and, and also handling building and zoning ordinance stuff um, on grading permitting with, when they do not want to handle it. So, it's been, it's been a, a, a learning experience, but I feel like I'm in a better spot now than I was a year ago and, and, and we'll, we'll keep moving forward.
It's kind of like, I'm sure there's some days we threw you in with the wolves, right? I mean, it's like, where do I turn?
I think the flood was the biggest.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I should put in debris management.
That was a good one too.
Well, that was.
And so, and, and I gotta say,
Well, kudos to you.
Training, training technicians takes up, it just takes time. And that's, like yesterday, it's hard to go to a concrete pour for two hours at five in the morning and then spend the rest of the day still trying to do
You should have called. We started at four thirty yesterday morning.
Came out.
And we were here till, we were like eleven thirty Tuesday, you know, yeah.
That was.
You could have called, we would have hung out with him.
But.
What's that?
Shared our coffee.
Bowling concrete, like watching porn.
Oh.
Other than the three tests every thirty hours and, and uh, checking grade and checking smoothness and tining and, and cure properly. And having a technician who's never, he's observed it, but he's never been the one writing it. And so, it, it can be nervous, seen, nervous for somebody who's done the test multiple times and has been certified in it. But that time when concrete truck's on the job and you get the, the sample and he's doing the air test and he's got the contractor, the truck, concrete truck driver, myself and, and maybe one or two other uh, foreman looking over his shoulder saying, okay, what's, where are we at on this air test? Because that's the yay or nay, whether they're able to pour this concrete. And so, that, that can be a little unnerving, especially your first time doing it. So, uh, I, I feel like I needed to be there.
You got all the bubbles out?
Got the bubbles out, yeah. Have you done the air con test, air content test before?
No, just guessing.
It's just, yeah.
Needs more farmer. You just look at, yep, looks good.
Yeah, good.
Start shoveling.
That was all I had for general discussion.
Well, Corey, it's been an enjoyable first year, I can say for myself. I mean, we've been through,
Oh my gosh.
It's unbelievable what we've been through in the past eighteen months.
Amen to that.
You know, with flooding and now we got the coronavirus stood on top of us and the regulations and stuff that's coming out, you know, so many things we've had to change, so many things we can't do to get a job done. It's just the paperwork is, but we've all lived through it. Uh, like I say, it's a learning experience that everyone should go through.
And, and I'm very proud that we had our first in-house design project completed. We, we still have a little bit of paperwork to do on, and the Levi and Kid Road overlays and so, I don't know. I, I like putting that little feather in my cap, I guess, you know, designing the project and, and doing the project administration. So that was good.
Good.
I had one other thing that came to mind, but I forgot. Oh, I was gonna say the gravel shortage. We, we expect the producers to be producing here in the next month or two.
They're grinding now.
And, and uh, we're, we've gotten, we've gotten maintenance work done early as, as far as we did some cracked ceiling. We, we did um, we've gotten uh, the seal coat uh, oil, oiling will be complete by the end of this week, tomorrow. M sixteen, L sixty-eight. Levi Road, we did the south portion, the last about three miles of that. And got the lake hill.
Stay in south part on Levi, or is it gonna be the whole?
The south part, because we did the, the overlay on the north part.
Okay.
So, we've gotten some of this maintenance stuff out of the way early, which has turned out to be good because now, once uh, we do have rock available in the county, we're gonna be hitting the gravel roads hard uh, this summer with the FM Rock project that's been delayed sixteen months now. And, and just uh, our sp- general rock in-house projects have, have been delayed. So, we will get things looking a little bit better. I, I do know some of our gravel roads are in a little rough shape, but ask for patience and, and we'll get to it.
Okay, good.
And I don't rather it's uh, you know, the reg- regular company is crushing the rock or not because they did not set up, normally they'd set up at their dumping dock.
That may just be the stuff just for us because of the Hundred Ninety Street.
They're just dumping the rock in front of a, a big track hole and he's picking up, putting it in the grinder, so.
That would definitely be our, our uh, modified sub base for the Hundred Ninety Street. And hopefully not too many people are seeing that and calling them up because that, that is for us. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Corey.
Thanks. I'll have some sketch plans for you later. When I can get to them today. Thank you.
He warmed it up for you, Jill.
Do you want to abate more taxes?
Yes, I do. Not me personally, but yeah. I'll give you just a little background on what's going on here. There has been this property that is in Emerson. It's at four oh seven King Street and also four eleven King Street. It has been in dissip- disrepair forever. I believe it started out as a house fire. The uh, city of Emerson has taken it on as an abandoned property. So, we need to abate all of the taxes. I have to reimburse two tax sales. And the total amount that is going to be abated is a little bit over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh my.
Part of that twenty-five thousand dollars is special assessments that was to go to the city of, of Emerson for their cleanup and things. But I do have to abate those. And then there's also some uh, current uh, preliminary specials out there that are not included in that amount, but I will take, strike those off of the uh, record as well. But uh, it's very much similar to what we did with the Glenwood property with the uh, when, once, yes, once the, once the city takes it over, we abate everything and uh, refund the actual amount that the tax sale investor has paid to us. We have to refund that.
When did the city take ownership to it again?
I didn't even have any. I just finally got the letter the other day and it looks like this has been going on since uh, April, I think was when this uh, was originally filed.
Okay, but.
April twenty-ninth.
They didn't take over till April, so wouldn't they still be responsible for the taxes prior to?
Not on an abandoned property.
Not on an abandoned?
Uh-uh, not when they,
I tried.
Yeah, I tried that with Glenwood when they, I tried it with Silver City. It just,
That, the rules don't apply there.
No, not on an abandoned property.
So, the house belonged to Lucas and Ashley?
Farmer.
Farmer.
Mm-hmm.
And the house was, had a fire?
I believe so. I think, I think that's what, one of the investors, yes, and they just walked away. And so then, the city of Emerson has been cleaning up and doing the repairs or the mowing and the nuisance stuff on it. So that's why, why the amount in our tax sale is so high, because that also includes the uh, special assessments. So we don't have to give any of that back. We just have to abate that part of it.
The easiest way to do it, isn't it? Just walk away.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So.
Um, Jill, if you want to just redo your second paper, if you're gonna just change it somewhere, because Lonnie's not here, so if you want to fix it so that Richard signs off.
Okay. Sure, I sure can. Yep, I'll, I'll take that back and, and do you have just a couple of other minutes for me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to abate um, the house, so is it four eleven King Street?
Both of them. Uh, it's two parcels, four oh seven Kings and four eleven King.
Alright.
It's two separate parcels.
Okay. So, the total amount abate for the property is twenty-five thousand, eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Wow.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to roll call.
He's absent. Crouch?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, no, just, I'll run it back over here. Um, we are starting to take appointments for next week.
Okay.
We are doing everything by appointment only. Um, we are trying to keep it as much towards Mills County as we can. If we do have somebody from Pot County who calls, especially with the CDL, we are trying to fit them in because they need to, they're what we're considering essential people for their, for their driver's license. We still are encouraging any student to do the, skip the trip online to get, do the permit test because of our social distancing in our office. I don't have six feet where I can help a person here and a person can test over here. We maybe have two feet mo- at most. So we're gonna try to steer away from doing any testing if we don't absolutely have to. We have had several people from Potawatomi County call. Anybody whose driver's license is expiring per se uh, like May, they have sixty days after before it comes expired in the state of Iowa. So we're telling them to wait and call back in a week or two. And then we'll put, we're only doing appointments two weeks at a time. Uh, I do have safety shields in place for the auto part. I'm gonna borrow Carol's for taxes because we're not taking any tax appointments. So, I shouldn't really need anything there at this time. Hopefully by the weekend, we will have the other ones up in our, in the auto department.
So, is Michael bringing those up?
No. Gary is.
Oh, okay, right.
And I still need another thermometer from, from Larry because I'm gonna have to run one for auto and one for, for driver's license. But here's where our problem lies. Anybody whose driver's license has expired between January sixteenth and April twenty-fifth, their license is gonna become expired at midnight on six twenty-five. At twelve oh one, they, on six twenty-six, they're gonna be driving on an expired license. So we would like to get the word out to those people that you need to get in here and get your appointments made before we fill them up with other things. So, but it's gonna be crazy. It's our, Tuesday's already filled, Wednesday's already filled. I think Thursday only had a, so we're gonna try to keep a couple of appointments open a day for an emergency person like you just realized, hey, I didn't know that this proclamation didn't let me have an extra sixty days. We're gonna try to fit you in on those two appointments that we have. We're gonna try to leave two out every day for emergencies only. So.
I'm sorry, Jill, how many did you say we're trying to make a day or is there?
Uh, it's, it's fourteen. It would be fourteen. Every half, we're going every half hour. So we have that time when we're done to clean in between, in between uh, to customers. So, and I need to talk to Michael and Steve about getting some cleaning supplies.
Does Larry have extra thermometers?
He does.
Okay.
He does.
Okay, yeah, because otherwise it's gonna be, we're asking people to remain in their car. We will call them on their cellphone when we're ready to, for them to come in. We'll meet them at the door. They, we have told them on the phone, you have to have a mask, you have to have uh, your temperature taken and you have to answer the screening questions. And I know at one time, uh, Public Health said they were gonna see if Patrick could put that up on the website. And I haven't gone out to the website. Did that, did the screening questions ever get on the website? Do you know by chance? I know, I think it was the department head meeting, we, we spoke about that. So, so if that can happen, then some of these people can get it downloaded and get those answered before, prior to meeting us. So, and otherwise, it, I think it's gonna be absolutely crazy, but.
Well, I think it's not currently open today.
No, they have been open. But, but they're,
No, they're not. They're opening Monday.
Oh, you mean that, you mean that since they've moved, the new,
No.
Are you talking about the courthouse or the driver's license?
Courthouse is not open. It wasn't open the other day. But they're opening the, for the eighth, next Monday.
Just like us, yeah. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking driver's license.
I think there's about seventy other counties that's gonna open.
There's a few of them that are not gonna open until the fifteenth, I saw. And we are not, we are not doing any driving tests until this all straightens out as to what kind of predictive gear we have to have to get, to get in a car and, yeah. So, and I don't think any county stations are doing um, doing drives at this time. So, okay, if you have any questions, you can stop by and, well, go from there, okay? Hopefully it'll all work out fine.
Yeah.
It'll all work out.
Somehow it will, won't it? Okay, well, I will get that uh, resolution back to you here in just a few minutes. So, which you're complaining.
Okay. You okay? You okay? You just had the shivers or?
How are you guys?
Good. We're just up here if you need our help or assistance with anything with the reopening.
Are you here for the buy, are you here with the buyouts or are you here with uh, workforce development? Oh, okay. Not here for changes in the wellness plan.
Not a whole lot of wellness.
Not a whole.
My wellness plan consists of what I can get done. If I can't get it done, I wait till my kids.
I'm just glad.
If I can't do it from the seat of my side by side,
Kind of feast a little bit.
We can do all the requirements online though. So.
Well, what are you, what are you getting ready to do here, buddy?
Taking my camera.
Oh.
Going home.
I made copies of that too. That's okay. I made copies of that too. Is that the document?
Here, take London. I gave them. Here, I've got them. He has copies.
Want you to change it? What'd you do?
I didn't do anything. They didn't have a copy.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Okay.
Administrative plan that our capable people here helped right, with SWPCO, with lots of input. And I did change the back page so we could approve it today. We could approve it today so that um, and having Richard sign off on it. So I just changed the back page to accommodate Richard signing off. Want to get loaded up. Yeah, yeah. And that was why we moved it forward. Okay? I think you all, I, you sent a copy of the administrative plan from SWPCO out to the board members as well to look at, I think. So, you guys. So we just had to have a final um, plan in place for the um, administrative plan of how the board will proceed. And it just identifies all the things that we've talked about prior to the, the rules and regs and also um, how we're gonna handle everything. So.
This is, will this be put on the website?
I think that'd be a good idea.
I mean, for those people, at least give them a heads up of what we're looking at.
Yeah, under the, on the other flooding buyout area, we can probably add that to it. Plus uh, once.
No, and basically Carrie said that, I mean, we sort of approved it, but this is the main one that needs to be approved for the, the, the actual, you know, buyout stuff. So, we can get it to Patrick and have him.
Put it up, so.
This has been coordinated, you know, of course County Attorney's Office facilitated this. SWPCO kind of started development of it, County Attorney's Office. Took it over to basically see if all areas were covered as outlined by the state federal government. And uh, also we uh, pushed this up to the state rep and had him look at it also, see if he saw anything uh, that we were missing. And so, that's all been, the coordination has all been completed on with the West End County Attorney's Office. So, and this includes uh, the relocation benefit the board authorized outside the floodplain. It's back of page ten talks about relocation system program for co-owner, for owner occupants. Those are all the programs that you have the right to uh, support or whatever and uh, the additional monies based on price of the new acquisition, up to a certain amount.
So, before the demo, is it up to them or us to um, plug the sewers, plug the wells, all that? How does that?
It's all part of the process. Uh, once the acquisition occurred, uh, by FEMA standards, there's a ninety day clock it starts. And uh, that's why all your RFP request proposals for demolition stuff have to be all aligned so that when these properties are starting to be closed on and acquisition by the county, then these processes of, these processes of abatement, inspection and abatement, the processes of continuing on with the demolition, to the lane up of any wells, septic, things of that nature, that's all part of the project.
Okay.
Instead of trying to get the, the inspections for all that stuff done prior to.
Prior to, got it.
That way the contractors can just get on.
Get right in.
Once they're awarded, uh, they can proceed and timely it can be managed to. I think the feeling is there'll be some properties that will be can move to closing uh, more efficiently than others. And some of that may have to do with uh, if they have to redevelop an abstract from baseline. It could be other legal reasons. And then, of course, the, the relation, the agreement between the board and the, the property owner to get it to closing. So, I think though, these will come in groups probably. Uh, so I don't, I would hope this would not be a three-year project. would not be a three-year project or longer. I think just we're going to see some, some of these done more efficiently, it's just getting this started and getting moving forward. I know that the RFP had been out for the abstract, and I know SWIPCO has got one or two of those applications in.
No, not, oh, on the, abstract. Oh, okay, I thought you said, I thought you said, yeah, I'm sorry.
The RFP for the abstract piece, but I know that the RFP for demolition probably is going to be, there's going to be a need to that to get started.
Sure.
So that we can move forward. So, we have a very good relationship with the state rep assigned us, as we have, this county has a history with this individual from Homeland Security Emergency Management Division, so he is a good set of eyes for us to help moving this forward for us and assisting us where needed.
Okay, all righty. Will I make a motion to approve the administrative plan for, what do I want to call it, SWIPCO for the buyout?
For the buyouts, yes.
Okay.
Second, there's been a motion made, seconded to approve the administrative plan with SWIPCO and for the buyouts that will be coming in the future. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We can pop you in quick, Tara, if we want to. And then we, are you guys in any rush?
No.
Okay, so let's, let's move Tara up, she's here regarding the changes in the wellness program.
So ISAC, because of the COVID situation with healthcare and what have you, ISAC had decided to change the requirements for what they require of the county in order to get our percentage off discount. So instead of requiring employees to do the exam and having their assessment fax form with all their blood work results, what have you, faxed in, they've decided to just require the online assessment. So as long as we get 90% of employee participation for the online assessments, we will get our five percentage, or five points, which is 5% off next year's premiums. We are currently sitting at 55% complete already for the people who have already done their assessments, so we're doing pretty good already with that. So what, the incentives that ISAC is going to do now is, instead of having the $25 for the exam, if you have done the exam and got your fax form sent in, you'll still get the $25 for that, but if you choose not to because you can't get in to see your doctor, or you're uncomfortable right now going to the doctor, whatever the case might be, you can replace it and do an extra health wellness pillar. So instead of doing four, you do five different pillars, and then you can still get the $25 for that, so you'd still end up with the $150 from ISAC as an incentive. And as a wellness committee, we talked about it, and we figured that the county could just change and go right along with what ISAC is doing now to where, as long as the employee does the online assessment, he or she will get the discounted insurance rates, and then if they do either the exam in four pillars as well as the assessment, or just five pillars and the assessment, then they'd get the day off, as we had originally decided to do, and just change it to go along with it. So I'm just here to tell you that those are the changes that had been made, so.
Okay. Glad they changed it.
Yeah, I think it helped a lot, because, yeah, because we didn't want to be pushing people to try and get into the doctor, you know, because, you know, you don't want the doctor to have to, you know, the doctor's office have to deal with the influx of people for one thing, and then there are people who just aren't comfortable, so.
Do we, is there anything formal agreements to sign off other than just to approve it?
Bear goes, meet you in the back.
No, they just have to approve the changer, yeah.
Also, I guess, just, I know, we spend a lot of time babysitting, but you, I think you, have you, have you told the employees what, where we are yet, or is that just?
Yes, I've sent it out to everybody.
And they know where they go to do their assessment, do we need to send that reminder again?
I just sent it out last week.
Oh, okay.
And all of the committee people know, so if you, if the employee doesn't know what to do, they can ask their committee person, and then if that person is still confused, they could just send them to me, and I can help them figure it out and get on there. Yeah. So, but I haven't really heard much from anybody. Yeah, the assessment is, it doesn't have any, any medical stuff that you have to put in, you're just ask, answering questions about your mental and physical health and how you're feeling and what have you, those sorts of things. So it takes five to 10 minutes, and it's easy and quick.
So is there a form online that we can print off to take to the doctor if we need?
I had emailed it out originally.
Okay.
But if you need another one, I can send you another one, so.
I'm just thinking, I, I just need to do that.
Yeah, and I mean, if you want to do it anyway, then you can still get the, well, I don't know if you guys get the same things that everybody else does because you're elected officials, I don't know how that works, but you get whatever you get.
Yeah, they don't, they don't get it. They help us towards getting it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I figured, so.
That's their, that's their mission.
So y'all just need to make sure you do your assessment.
And make sure you cash your checks from the assessment, or from what you received last year from us, because apparently we do have some checks that are unpaid still, that have not gone through.
Have you looked in your billfold, Richard?
They.
Oh, I've only got three pickups, just be careful. It could be, it could be laying out in a cornfield somewhere.
Because it wasn't an envelope, and it was a check.
That could be the problem.
That probably, and he probably wrote on the back of the envelope.
Just saying, you might want to look for it, because otherwise we're going to.
I will give you a call, because I'm, in my mind, I've been wanting to do that, so.
I'll just send you the form.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so.
So anybody have any other questions?
All righty, will I make a motion to approve the updates of the changes of the wellness program?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the updates regarding changes in wellness program. Any further discussion? Are you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tara.
Motion carries.
Okay, now you can skip back up to the chair to sign the articles of agreement, I actually have the, I have that here somewhere, okay.
Are we still in the workforce development?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We still are. There's, we just need to sign off with amendments and all the wonderful other stuff that was left in there, so I have fixed the things so that you can sign off on it, Richard is the vice chair, so we just need a motion to have the vice chair sign.
I make a motion for Richard, the vice chair, to sign the articles of agreement of the workforce development.
Motion made and seconded for the vice chair to sign the articles of agreement with workforce development. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Again, again? Why? Yeah. So there's like a government policy out there?
No.
That talks about.
We have.
Campgrounds that.
We found it, they had it, they had it.
My advice, yeah, it's probably, I can see it's still.
It needs to be, it needs to be, there's a couple elements that need to be added to it, if they can hear.
My advice was just to add that to the actual floodplain order.
Or maybe refer to it near.
Because, or yeah, one of the two, like, at least make a reference if not.
Well, can it be changed before we approve the second reading?
I think it's important we move towards that, though.
Because, so, I mean, it's not really called out anywhere that this, what is it, an amendment?
It's, it's an administrative engineering policy based on, from the floodplain manager put out years ago before even Ed Meyer, or the early engineers, and it had to do with repetitive loss in the area of the floodway that actually Barkers had a campground south of Mendles back in the days of cabins, and after repetitive loss, FEMA came out and directed floodplain managers in the counties along the Missouri River corridor that had habitats like this, developing their campgrounds, that there must be some oversight in policies from licensing, inspection, compliance, which included not only the FEMA, but it included the corps of engineers, DNR, you know, departmental resources for water quality, waste, things of that nature, and, and so that's how that was developed. Fairly comprehensive back then, but what it's lacking is, is, we noticed, is it needs to be updated to include the compliancy piece, you know, as a county, the county's evolved from building codes, and complacency, and zoning, and all this, so Darren's office would play a role in some of the inspection process, just like now, where they can put electricity or new electricity online, Mid-America will not turn power back on until suspected by the county, and so, and then there's an emergency management element of this, of having a plan of how are we going to evacuate? What's your trigger? What's your plan? Now, one of our campgrounds has a plan, and the other one's in developing their plan now, so I think what.
They are developing.
Assistant county attorney is talking about here is, is that we need to solidify the relationship between the overall overarching guidance by the county and local policy in support of that guidance, and what Tyler's saying is we incorporate it within the ordinance, or we.
It makes the most sense just to make it part of the ordinance, since we've just, since we've done an entire overhaul.
It's kind of like a tab C or something.
It makes the most sense just to incorporate this.
And that causes you to review an update, when you do review updates of the overall ordinance, which undoubtedly, there'll be an update down the road somewhere when more information, a new flood insurance study is conducted, whenever FEMA gives us guidelines on what this base is going to look like down the road, and again, it's just not our concerns Missouri River, it is concerns county-wide with all our flood, waterways.
Well, at least if they don't want to abide by the rules, we've got something we need to go by and say, you didn't do this, and this, and this.
And technically, we do, and the admin policy, but I don't see why we want to make it so much, and it gives us more strength to enforce it.
So we're going to, so the engineer gives, the floodplain manager engineer gives, his strategy is to work with both the current campground families, not the owners, to let them be successful, but do it in compliance, and with the policy, and then have a plan for evacuation, which really isn't addressed by the current policy when it was developed long ago.
Right.
It just wasn't, I thought, it was assumed. So, so basically, that's just a recommendation I have, so that's being worked on now.
Okay.
But, but those owners are aware that there is a policy of certain requirements, so, so those, that will be ongoing, and I agree, that's probably a good idea. It's just, it's going to take a little bit more formal action to get it.
Yeah, so we'll have probably, hopefully, one final amendment to that ordinance.
Because they've never had.
It'll be another section, I assume, right? It'll be under another section.
It'll be under, under tab, I don't, I'd have to.
I'll probably add it to the, what is it, the floodway district section, I think is what, what that's labeled now.
But they have never had a plan.
Well, there's a formal plan, it's just not, it's not codified as an ordinance.
You know, there's a formal policy, the engineer, probably, the floodplain manager has had a policy, and I thought he did, I just never had my hands on it until recently, so.
And the fact that we've struggled to find it means that, how can you expect members of the public to know about it if?
Right.
Just a quick question, would it make any more sense just to scrap what we were doing on the, and doing the second reading and stuff, if we could just re?
We certainly could, because that one's not really that big of a deal.
No, I mean, we could approve it, and then.
Yeah, this is just to get full compliance of FEMA, that's all this, this is what this element is here now.
No, that's fine with me, I mean, yeah, because we've already got that part done, but all it is, is changing that one, the definition, so.
What you, what you might want to do is, if you do next week, do the second and or third, is you basically take action to either stop that process to allow for the additional amendment to be formulated and incorporated into it, and then you're going to start that first reading again, or the public hearing notice.
Public hearing.
Yeah, that's probably a better plan.
Yep.
Can we just let Cory know that?
Okay, all right.
Well, maybe, just let me know what you feel is added to the.
We're working on it now.
offices.
All right, so basically, I took what we discussed last week in our department head meeting, and I put it together for the board, I don't know if these are, you want to add more or take away any of these procedures, but this is the takeaway I got from last week, so I put it down in writing.
One idea, and I talked this with Julie from Public Health, and I haven't talked to the auditor yet, is item three here, it talks about calling upon arrival, let the office know you're in the parking lot, so you'll be contacted when we come in, and that's for the convenience of the patron, if they've been able to download and fill this out and bring it with them. I think the auditor's intention and other county offices should have copies of these at their foreiers, so that before they actually come in, they either can take one back out of the car and fill out, and have it available to be reviewed by the department being visited, or they can produce that when they first come to the door to be reviewed, the temperature taken. The, the numbers, I know that, I'm pretty sure the, you were talking about, auditor, about producing some signage for numbers to call, of course, people by default could go to the website or, or look in the phone book, but where else are they going to be able to know, call upon from my car when I don't know the number?
Well, they set up the appointment is the thing, so they have already called in, so they should have the number.
And, and that's probably true, but do we put them with the form on the website, you know, to meet, to put them all in one place, and then on the forms we have out here for them to pick up and then go out and fill out if they don't have web access, which there's some people that don't, that, the numbers would also be on the back of the form of the various departments, possibly, that way they, they have it right there in front of them instead of having to look it up, in other words, we want to, because they were, you all are trying to make a decision here today to do a soft opening, to allow a little better access for the public on things that are really hard to do in some departments, in some of the county services electronically, or put it in a gray box, you know.
I think that's a good idea, Larry, I think that should be out there on the, on the website, because I was trying to figure out how we're going to do that anyway, so that it's simultaneous with that, I mean, do you need some help compiling that, or?
Well, I think, yeah, we, and this, because this would affect anywhere you want to put these, and I think all county departments need that, to have these, the problem is some of our departments are going to have issues because their office, you walk in the door, you're there, and you don't have the vegetable, or, you know, get it out.
A vegetable to go out?
We have a vegetable out here.
We do, we have a couple of vegetables.
In the courthouse, which allows them to come in and get forms and stuff, and they could actually fill them out there. I would not recommend here putting a bunch of pins there, we discussed this yesterday in the emergency operations briefing, because, yeah, they take the pin with them, but how you know they took it with them? And so you're better off just having the forms there.
Right.
And, and then they would have to have the pin, the writing potential to fill them out. Where the goal is, is that they do them online, and, and they burn them out, they have them ready to go, they made out appointment, as the county attorney has said, commented on it, and then they're just waiting to be called in, and I think they're sitting in their car waiting to be called in, it's better. And I think they're sitting in their car waiting to be called in, it's better than standing out here in the foyer. And we have to watch that too, because social distancing, we don't want a gaggle of six or seven, eight people waiting to come in. And I'm assuming this will affect clerk of court too, if she signed up to do this, or are they running their own show?
No, they are running their own show. On that notice, it says that this does not affect any of the procedures in place that the Supreme Court has put in place.
So basically, through you, when the courts start to do things, you advise the board, because the board's going to have to make accommodations, well, the auditor will, for the courthouse, you know, how the transitory, how people are coming in, how people are going, what will we compromise when they do that, if we're not fully opened, and stuff like that, as we get to that point. All right.
Where do you propose we put these forms?
I think for the courthouse, they can go out here where the other stuff is. And then hopefully, we encourage that most people have online access, and they can print them out, and they'll have them in their car when they come.
They don't even have to print it, do they? They just submit it?
They could submit it, they could actually.
How does an eighty-year-old?
Right.
Yes, I mean, there's a demographic that people are not going to be able to do it online. So they're gonna have to come in and get a copy of the form to get filled out, to gain access. There was also discussion today about what is the disclaimer of the department rep saying, listen, you know, you can't come in because you failed the litmus test. It's really not the special population area, because the first one is, you can't say no to all this, because are you sixty or older? There's going to be a lot of people who are going to be over sixty years old, sorry, failed. Do you have a history respiratory? Well, some of them may have COPD, and that's a caution you have. If you have conditions of you're older than sixty, you have health conditions or history, you have other diseases, or you're wanting to put yourself at risk. Of course, in this courthouse, for example, it might be lower risk, and going in, definitely going in a grocery store. So we're asking to be covered when they come in. So those are just special population concerns and other health concerns of other people, and they be symptomatic. The real key is this middle thing, is the symptoms and potential contact questions, it's how they answer those. And then us taking our infrared monitor out there and just taking a reading, just to get an estimate of where they sit. If they're, you know, above that hundred margin or whatever, the decisions can't be made by the departmental employee. If everything else here is no, and they pop one oh two, then what do you do?
Say goodbye.
Say, listen, we're gonna, we're gonna have to make some other arrangements for you today, until you get your temperature down, apologize, you know, good bedside manner, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, and I anticipate when people are setting up these appointments, that whoever is going to be taking that call will be telling them, we have some precautions in place, we just want to let you know. We need you to fill out this questionnaire, you can get it online. If you can't get it online, there'll be copies at the door. Or they could go through the questionnaire with the person on the phone.
That's true. Because they're still gonna, because when they come in, if they have a name, and they make the appointment, then the employee should take that out when they meet them, and then confirm those questions.
Can you have?
Or any questions we may have.
If someone's making an appointment on the phone, can whoever's making that appointment on our side pull this form up and fill it out?
That's what she was, maybe I was just recommending.
Well, and you don't want to take too much time for everybody that has the ability to do this. If they protest and say, look, I don't have internet access, I don't know how to do that, then you can go through the form with them on the phone.
The treasurer is taking appointments for up to two weeks, so taking this form on the day she's talking to them to make the appointment is important.
I mean, you can update it, you at least have it filled out, and then you can, when they come in, when they call to come in.
There's so many times I've got something that I just gotta forward to Carol, because my internet down in those hills.
Well, not, I mean, they're calling to get in the building too, right?
Yeah, they can still get in that.
To get in, because before they can get in, or come into any, and this, we need to keep in mind our other county departments, because we need to be concerned about them too. I think all the department has, based on what they discussed, was, has unique situations, and egress, ingress, that I think they can adapt, overcome with this, and I think we just need to let those departments, you know, as long as they meet the spirit intent, and that they, we have some documentations. And I think this documentation is important, and I think the departments need to retain these, because in case something comes up, especially if we have said person come up with positive, or symptomatic and positive, we can go back and say, did they come in? This will aid public health in tracing. It could. So we don't want these just to go into the shred box right away, because in case somebody.
They probably should go in a file folder, and then we probably should scan them and send them if there's any question, I would.
We just need to retain them, and the departments could hold them in a folder, and periodically, we could scan them up to a drive, and then that way, if we do have something happen, that somebody becomes positive, Lori and Julie will have access to that information, and to, it'll really expedite their tracing, because it could affect employees in the courthouse and other customers.
I think in reality, this is going to work a lot smoother than it seems, and seems conceptually, because whoever they're making the appointment to see will handle this portion, the procedures.
And if you really want an appointment, you're gonna figure it out.
I think the public's waiting for this, and I think we just need to do everything we can to take this step, and then see, and see how we are doing, and then so you can reevaluate and make recommendations to take another step.
Right. And I'm gonna get ahold of Joe Forman today, too, obviously, next Wednesday later than what, you know. Obviously, we're gonna start this Monday, but it won't be in the paper till Wednesday.
We can do a press release, though, but put it on the website.
Yeah, we'll get, Nick, to, once you, if you sign off on this, or approve this, then we will get PIO to get this out there. It could generate an interview, we might be able to get, hook up with KMA, because that's a good broadcast.
I never did that stuff out on Buzz, because some people don't have anything other than Buzz or anti-Buzz to read.
Right.
But I think, for something like this, KMA would be interested in this, probably live, normally an early morning show thing. It has the best effective coverage, and, but whoever does that talk to you, which it could be Julie, it could be the auditor, whoever, we need to ensure that we say this is countywide, this is just not the courthouse.
Well, I would suggest sending it to KMA as a press release.
They're on the list, but the other press media. So then they, it'll either generate a query, or we can be proactive, and we've already talked about Public Health doing an update that Julie talked about today with KMA on reminding them where we are, where we've been, where we are, some things are still restricted, and just to keep in the loop. You know, we can put press releases out all day, but sometimes that human element of talking to somebody, and we do have, KMA and KCSI has large followings in our county on radio.
Richard brought up a good point about the bathrooms. I think it would be best if we put, I know that they're hard to get, Larry, but if you have sanitizer wipes, to give them the option to wipe down right before they go to the restroom.
That's how you know they do it.
That's, it's their.
No, it's their liability, but it's a liability of the county, because county employees use those restrooms, and if they're not cleaning them.
I don't think so. For taking customers, you gotta have them open.
Because that's gonna cause, you know, that's gonna cause.
You know, then the employee needs to take the responsibility of wiping it down before they go.
I was going to suggest that.
They're definitely going to have to stay on top of it, but they can't do it after every single person uses every single stall.
I'm just telling you, that's something right here, age come down. That's why you're not seeing porta potties and stuff being used, because they have to be maintained after every use.
I'd say if you want to be careful, and you're concerned about getting the virus, then you need to take the precautions yourself, if you're gonna use public restrooms.
Social distancing.
We can't stop everybody from making poor decisions, but we can give them the option to make a wise decision by providing sanitizer wipes.
You know, anymore, I don't even want to touch that handle to open the door. You just keep your towel, and just.
I always have done that, always, even before all of this.
Yeah, because you just.
And if you don't want to sit on the seat, wipe it down first.
That's right.
The thing about the sanitizer wipes, they're hard to get, and we have very limited supply, and they're basically being going out.
You could do a paper towel and a spray.
You see a lot of stores doing that now. Yeah.
And the Clax wipes, probably keep it wet for a while, and they wouldn't want to sit on it.
We can try to.
Well, what I'm afraid of, do they flush them down the toilet?
Oh, that's the other thing, we could inherit it. Yeah, we could inherit that.
Put trashes, trash cans in the toilet stalls. I mean, we can put all the precautions in place that we can think of, but we can't force people to take those precautions every second of every day.
Yeah, but unless it's an emergency, I'd say case by case, but we're not asking people to loiter in the courthouse. They're coming in by escort, and they're escorted out to do a civic business, and that means the chances, again, if we wanted to leave the bathrooms closed, except for case by case, we ought to have the right to do that, because of, it's just.
Well, that would be a board decision. If you guys want to close the bathrooms, but allow them to use them case by case spaces, that's a possibility.
Maybe they've had a long morning, and they finally made their appointment, and.
Well, here's the problem is, is that based on this policy, when they're escorted through the door of any county department, they have to be supervised coming in for the appointment. And that means if they're going to restroom, something's gonna have to have a line of sight. Not go in the restroom, but they're gonna have to have a line of sight, if you allow those restroom to stay open, because you can't leave them alone. Otherwise, they could wander other parts of the courthouse, which is against your policy.
Right, it'll be a one-on-one thing.
I just don't want to create a situation of unnecessary exposure to our employees. And I'm guessing some departments.
If I'm going to the bathroom, I'm gonna wipe it myself then, knowing that public is in here. I mean, you just have to take those precautions on your own. You cannot force people to do that every time. If you want to be safe, you have to take the precautions yourself and be mindful.
We can ask, Carol, maybe ask custodians to put some spray in each bathroom with some, but I'm just worried about them throwing even the paper towels down the.
Well, maybe there's spray that you don't need to wipe, maybe it's just like a Lysol, I don't know what kills the virus, but.
It is, but it has to stay there for a period of time, but the thing is, it makes it wet, and you're gonna sit down on the wet until it dries, and it's not gonna dry within seconds, it's gonna take a minute or so to dry. So that's the downside of it. Because we have some of that.
I think people will figure it out.
I think most people will probably do business and leave. She's getting funny down to the table. She's like.
Yeah, we don't want people, I mean, put a little note like they do in most bathrooms. Do not flush paper towels down toilet, provide them with a trash can in each stall. I mean, we could do a setup where we can.
Maybe that's a sign.
Hypothetically, if we kept the bathrooms at ninety-five degrees.
On the doors, before they go in.
Do what now?
I said hypothetically, if we kept the bathrooms at ninety-five degrees.
So when they went to open the door, they had a hundred fifty-degree heat, it flushed.
Oh, I was gonna say, what's ninety?
That's an idea, just bring heaters in.
So those are just things to think about. I did put in advisory that's, you know, these are precautions, and we're gonna try to help reduce the spread of COVID-19, but these precautions, like any precautions, aren't gonna eliminate the possibility of somebody contracting COVID-19.
You got more of a chance going to Walmart, or Sam's, or someplace like that. Or your local grocery store than you have with what we're doing here.
Right.
I went to Menards yesterday, and there was a cop right there by the door, made sure, number one, you have a mask on, and you're by yourself.
Yep.
No kids, no hubby, or you or.
Well, and that's not on here. I'm hoping that people won't bring their entire families to do their.
I thought of that. Surely, they wouldn't do that. Oh.
I mean, there are people who are single parents, who have no option.
That's right.
But.
And they're by appointment, so that may be somewhat contained when they come in, because it's not like we're gonna have a bunch of people standing in line inside the building.
Right, and whoever's letting them in the door can say, hey, I don't think it's a good idea if you bring your five kids in to the building.
Yeah.
If that's an option.
So basically, we need to get a listing of phone numbers, auditor person, of all of the.
And I like that, just right on the back. It's not an extra.
To have it available on the forms we're offering here, having this form with this policy, with the other sheet. No, he'll have to post it so it reads with the numbers, so they have access, instead of having to go to different pages of the county departments. It'll all be associated with this.
Well, and I imagine we're gonna have big signs too. We already have signs with all the numbers on the door.
Remember, for the people that pre-download these.
We have printed, I mean, printed on the doors, but.
So just an idea that was brought up.
No, that's fine, and like I said, probably, you know, if you're, if we're doing a press release on this, to KMA, obviously, OT.
Well, KMA's more or less would see this, and maybe just this form, whereas this is the narrative they might want to interview about, if they'd like to give you a spot, which we can, we can ask for those spots, saying, hey, we have a story we'd like to talk about.
Sure. No, I think getting it on the website and everywhere possible, that is a good, good plan. And direct people, if they have questions, make, you know, to call the department head if they have.
So we're all right with Luann having an appointment, audit department, tax department won't have one, but driver's license, audit department, Luann, all these people coming in the door at one time.
Well, they won't.
Well, you've got an eight o'clock appointment.
Yeah, there'd only be three departments on the main level that would have somebody in there. It'd be the auditor, treasurer, and Luann.
You could have three people. He's talking about three people at the desk filling out this form.
Well, you have, I've seen four people, three or four people in that.
Well, I mean, you've got the assessor downstairs, I mean, everybody's gonna be open to business.
But that means.
Even the county attorney.
That means that person's gonna be escorted downstairs, you know, and so they won't be upstairs. And I think, I think the concern, I think.
And I kind of suggested to her too, that maybe they use this entrance right here, to help those people come through, so then they can just go straight down. I mean, since they have to come up and let them out in any way, it would be a lot easier than bringing them all the way through down the stairs, and what happened.
I think it's minimal impact, it's not like you're buying them for three minutes, which is one of the criteria also, by the way. Is that, is that I think that Luann had a concern about somebody at her counter, and then right behind that, that's almost five, four by six feet, and really, there's two stalls there. They could actually, they've only got one appointment coming in, they could go to their offset, so you have somebody here, somebody offset here.
It will be up to each department to make sure that they are adhering by these precautions and any other precautions that we need, that need to take place, like social distancing, the six feet. You know, I trust our people to be wise and to do whatever is necessary to adhere to these policies and protect themselves and the public. So I'm not worried about, the only thing I would worry about is, for letting them come in the entrance, you know, I guess you could put only one station for these forms, and have axes or dots to keep them six feet away while they're grabbing their form.
Which ironically, some people still don't know that that door is on lock, and they'll stand outside that door, probably outside, outside, because they don't know they can even open that door and come in, so. But yeah. Okay. Well, is everybody straight?
Yeah, I.
Larry's gonna be in charge of sending to. Does anybody?
We'll get it out, but I need how you want to list the phone numbers.
Get some numbers on the back there.
Just something that's now, a good size font that we can add to the back of this, and then Patrick will figure out how he wants to present it on the website with this document here, and then I'll get PIO to release this to the media sources, so they know we're doing it, once you approve it.
Well, I make a motion to approve the procedures for the phase of reopening the public offices, effective June eighth.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve the procedures for the reopening of public offices here at the courthouse. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you all. This concludes our work here at the county board for the day. We'll see you next week.